I think that gets us to the budget presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. We're now turning to discuss the portion of the work session on our fiscal year 2021 budget. And to do that, we have asked our Deputy City Chief Financial Officer, Ed Benino, to lay out some of the dates and the framing for this discussion and for future conversations. Then I've also asked our Deputy City Manager, Nerea Rivera Vandermind, to talk about what we're doing for the next steps on the reimagining public safety conversation. As you know, when this budget was presented two weeks ago, I highlighted the fact that it's one of the most challenging budgets that we put together. Not only are we dealing with the crisis of a pandemic, but we're also dealing with a very critical discussion around how we look at public safety in our community going forward. So both of those combined, knowing that we had to produce a budget a month ahead of time than what was normally scheduled, has put the situation. And so we've talked about as a moment in time budget that would be amended over the course of this next year. And so hopefully that will be part of these discussions as well. But with that, I'll turn it over to our Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Ed Benino.
Thank you, Spencer, and good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor of the town and council members. Ed Benino, Deputy Chief Financial Officer for the city. I just have a few slides to get the ball rolling this morning to talk about our upcoming budget dates and the proposed agenda for the next two work sessions, as well as the process that we'd be recommending to council or council members to bring forward your various amendments to the city manager's proposed budget. Let's move to the next slide, please. So on this slide, you see what our upcoming budget dates are. This is surely not all the budget dates. We had a whole bunch of budget dates leading to this point today. But here we are on July 28th at our first budget work session of two. We'll be back on July 30th at the regularly scheduled council meeting where we'll be holding a public input session on the budget. This will be our second public input session. On August 4th, we have an all-day budget work session scheduled with the city council. August 6th is a public safety committee. This is not officially part of our budget calendar, but on the public safety committee agenda is a discussion of the city's public safety budget. So I put that on here for reference. And then on August 12th, we'll begin our budget adoption proceedings. A little bit different than what we've done in past years, those proceedings will start off with a final round of public hearings on the budget and the tax rate. That will then be followed by the proceedings to adopt the budget, including council considering the various amendments that council members elect to bring forward. And then finally, after the budget has been adopted, that's also when council would be asked to do a tax rate election related to Project Home. Next slide, please. So for today's work session, it's 2:15. We estimate this work session will probably take about two hours. This is not going to get through all of the questions. We're really looking to this work session to try to tee up the areas that we need to spend more time on and working with council members on. Here I am talking about the work session agendas, and I'll get into the budget amendment process in a bit. When I'm done with that, we would like to transition into a staff briefing about what is going on with the continuing efforts to reimagine public safety and what next steps staff is recommending in that process. After we do that, we would then be looking to turn it over to council to have a roundtable discussion about the reimagining of public safety and using that as an opportunity for council to start bringing forward additional ideas you may have about what that could look like for fiscal year 2021. Staff would then want to come back based upon the ideas we hear today. We would come back at that all-day August 4th work session with additional details and information about the various concepts we hear today and to continue that conversation. And then finally, we also then a similar process to what I just described for the reimagining of public safety. But any other budget topics that council members feel that need to have additional conversation leading up to adopting of the budget on August 12th. That's what we've been looking forward today, largely hearing from council about what are those pressure points in the budget that we need to spend some more time on before moving forward with adoption. We'll go to the next slide and look at the planned agenda for August 4th. Again, we would propose this to be an all-day work session starting at 9:00 a.m. There's a lot in this budget related to homelessness. And of course, the consultant report on homelessness recently came out. So we would propose to council using the morning of this work session to talk about those two things. Breaking for lunch and then coming back at 1:00 to continue the conversation about the reimagining of public safety concepts that were identified at the July 28th work session. And then from 3:00 to 5:00, doing the same thing, but for the other budget topics that we identified today, the council indicates we want to hear more about. On the next slide, there's a reiteration that after August 4th, on August 6th, the Public Safety Committee is having a meeting to further discuss the public safety budget. And of course, this committee meeting will be open to all council members. So those are the key dates, the timeline ahead of us. On the next slide, then we put together a process for council, what we hope is an orderly process for council bringing forward amendments to the proposed budget. This seemed to work well last year, and so we're proposing to follow the same processes last year. I sent to you last night a standardized form for council members to provide your amendments. This will help ensure that we have consistency across the various amendments. We would ask that council members post those prospective amendments to the council message board no later than August 10th to give everyone sufficient time to review the various amendments that will be considered. On August 11th, staff will compile all the amendments that we have received that have been posted to the message board into a single packet and send that to council members on August 11th. And in doing so, that'll ensure that everyone is working from the same documents at the beginning of the budget proceedings on August 12th. I'm going to take a pause there. If we go to the next slide and just put that up there. This is just for anybody watching, get a whole bunch more information about the city's budget at speakupaustin.org. But I take a pause here, Mayor, to see if there's any questions about the timeline or the agendas for the meeting or the budget amendment process I just laid out.
Any questions on those topics? Okay, why don't you go ahead and proceed?
So I just have one more slide. If we can move to the next slide, please, before I transition over to Deputy City Manager Rivera Vandermind. I wanted to lay out for the city council in a little bit more detail.
Hang on one second. Let's get to our kitchen.
I'm sorry, I didn't get my hand up. On the, so Councilmember Flanagan, you've been doing a really good job of letting us know how you want to handle meetings. So when you get that clear on the August, whatever date that was, meeting, if you have a way in which you want us to provide our thoughts on amendments, let us know because that meeting will be before we actually will be posting, although some of us may be able to post before then. So, thank you.
Well, and I think some of us have already posted on the message board using the form that Ed has put out. And I think the sooner we can get the bigger ideas out, the more likely it is we can find a way to fit them all together and then dig into the details at the committee meeting on the 6th. And hopeful that if the folks are able to participate on the 6th, then we can spend the 4th on all the other things we got to worry about because there's obviously a lot more in the budget to focus on.
Okay, thank you. So I'll work to make sure that any suggestions I have are on the message board well in advance of that meeting.
Rodney? Or Ed?
Sorry.
Sorry.
So back to this one slide. We just wanted, before turning over to Deputy City Manager Rivera Vandermind, I wanted to provide the summary of the ins and outs of the Police Department budget and how it changed from the fiscal year 20 budget to fiscal year 21. Budgets are complicated. There's a lot of moving pieces in them and a lot of numbers are discussed. So I put this slide together to try to help council and the community understand the ins and outs of the changes in the Police Department budget. So on the far left, that first blue bar shows the fiscal year 2020 approved budget. That's the budget the council approved for the current fiscal year. It's $434.5 million. A standard part, kind of the beginning part of our budget process every year, and we do this with all of our departments back in March and April, is to work through with the departments their base cost drivers. In the case of the Police Department, there was $7.9 million in cost drivers that we added to their base budget for fiscal year 21. That was the 30 additional officers, call for in the police staffing plan, as well as 2% pain increases, both for civilians and sworn personnel. There's other ups and downs in there, but for the most part, those are the two largest drivers of the base increases. Then in June, the city council provided direction to staff to do a number of things. The city council directed staff to not add the 30 officers for the police staffing plan. So we took those out of the base budget. Furthermore, they directed us to delay the July cadet class and then to do a calculation of the positions that couldn't reasonably be filled. Delaying the July cadet class resulted in some savings. And then we estimate that there's 70 positions that we will not be able to fill, even with running cadet classes, pre-cadet classes through the course of fiscal year 2021. That all pulled an $11.3 million reduction from that base budget. And then some of that $11.3 million ended up being allocated back to the Police Department. Two items in particular, the record management system and additional funding for training needs was a $3.2 million that was then added back. So you take those ups and downs and you end up at the fiscal year 21 budget that staff is proposing at $434.3 million. So I just wanted to put that out there because we've received a lot of questions about all these different changes and $11.3 million versus the $200,000 reduction that you see if you look at this FY '20 versus FY '21. So hopefully this helps clarify some of those numbers, not only for council, but also for community members who are interested. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about this slide. Otherwise, I would pass it over to Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Ed. If there are no questions, I will move to my presentation.
Go ahead, please.
Great. While that presentation is being brought up, I'll say I'm Nerea Rivera Vandermind. I'm the Deputy City Manager. We, as staff, I'll say, have been watching with great interest the message board and really excited to see so many comments and initiatives align with some of the ideas that we've had and some of the conversations we've had as well, and seeing some new ideas as that moves forward. And today I just wanted to share with you a very high-level overview of what we have been doing on the work to reimagine public safety so far and hopefully give you a sense of some of the conversations we've had and the direction that we're going. Next slide. So as the city manager convened a leadership team, you'll see the members, the core members in that team there. Assistant City Managers Ray Ariano and Chris Shorter, OPO Director Farah Musketin, Chief Equity Officer Brian Oaks, Chief of Police Brian Manley, AC Troy Gay, Lee Crawford in the Law Department, and Jessica King from Comms have really been the core CMO leadership. And from the very beginning, I'll say that we took to heart what the manager said in his message about really co-creating with community. We really wanted to make sure that we centered the voices of those community members and organizations that frankly have been historically impacted by police violence. And so we came up with an initial conceptual framework to really think about how do we move this work forward and knew that frankly, there was some bridge building and there was some trust building as we needed to move forward. So the next slide. I want to focus the bulk of my comments on this conceptual framework because it is something that we have shared in large part with the community organizations that we have reached out to. When we thought about creating a city-community reimagining task force, we really wanted to make sure that, again, that it was centered in folks who have been working in social justice initiatives, who come to this work knowing a lot of our advocates and our nonprofits who come to this work really knowing a lot of the background and a lot of the history in Austin about policing and generally. But we also knew, and perhaps as a new person to the community, not just a year here in Austin, it was a good opportunity to have some one-on-one conversations to share the initial framework that we had thought of, but to really make the invitation clear that we didn't want to just put something out there that was baked, that we really wanted to have this conversation and co-create the next steps with community. And so we have endeavored to do that. I have two last conversations left that hopefully should wrap up by this week. But in those, we asked for some feedback on where we were moving towards and what we were thinking of. In that framework, at a high level, we shared that part of what we wanted to do is to create this really city-community task force that would be seeing the umbrella of what reimagining looks like. We anticipate, because we don't want to be a single body of that bottlenecks and/or has things that work that is concurrent, that we would like, I mean, that is consecutive. We would like to have concurrent work as that moves forward. So we anticipate having a series of work groups that would bring in experts again from community, other staff members, depending on the topic. And that work group and those recommendations would come up to the task force as well. We thought in that framework that that would also allow, not only for work to go faster, but frankly would allow additional opportunities for input from some of our community partners as well. So as we thought about this co-creation and developing a work plan and creating these advisory groups, we threw out there in our conversations that at our concept that we thought of use of force and de-escalation as two of the main topics or that is kind of together topics for a work group. We also thought frankly that alternatives to traditional policing is a topic that has come up and in particular, expanding or exploring other models for mental health or crisis intervention, approaches to homelessness response, victim services needs. And it is a topic that has come up and we wanted to explore what that looked like. We too had thought, and I know that we saw it in the message boards, about the possibility of creating an office of violence prevention and what does that look like as we move forward. We also want to, there are other topics as we move forward that we have posed. And again, once this city-community task force is convened, we hope that together we can formalize the topics and the priorities to be doing next. But we have not taken anything off the table and have conversed about governance models. There are a variety of jurisdictions that have either boards of police commissioners that are civilians. We have examples such as Boston that has actually a police commissioner that heads a department with a superintendent-in-chief that is sworn. And there are other governance models out there as we move forward. We've thought about reduction of enforcement for minor crimes and as a way to perhaps reduce the amount of intervention that uniform officers do in community. Certainly, there is work happening and conversations happening about training. And there is current work already happening about culture change in the department and looking forward to seeing some of those existing reports come forward. And I'll talk about that in a moment. The other aspects that we talked in this task forces, we talked with our community partners, is that we are exploring the hiring of 21st Century Policing as a real active facilitator for this work. I know that my colleagues, ACMs, Shorter and Ariano have spoken to the folks at 21st Century Policing. I am joining that conversation with them directly with Ron Davis tomorrow as we explore that. And what we have sort of scoped out in terms of that work is a facilitation, an active facilitation and a national perspective, much like we have done with our homelessness consultants, with Matthew Doherty and Barbara Poppy as we have brought them forward. But certainly to assist us with the task force, but frankly also to be technical advisors directly with PD as we move forward. Because as the work of reimagining progresses, we also must make sure that the day-to-day work that is happening in PD continues to be aligned with how we are moving forward in that reimagining framework. So we also have a group that is focused on data and research. And while we are waiting to have those last one-on-one conversations, and I have to say that those conversations have been certainly instructive and been, I think, really necessary to pull this group together. We didn't want to be waiting for some of the work. We want to be ready to jump in as soon as that task force is convened. So we have the innovation team. Carrier Connell has been looking at 911 review and analysis. Also taking some of the work that has already been done in community, in particular, the AJC work that they had hired with AH Data Analytics, but also performing a deeper dive and getting some additional research and some data from APD directly. We are looking at peer city reviews and have a whole set of conversations and models to look at, whether it's cahoots. And Councilmember Flanagan, I know that you brought cahoots into the Public Safety Committee, and we have been exploring some of that possibility as well. I know other jurisdictions like Denver and San Francisco have taken that approach and made it work for their jurisdictions. We wanted to take a look at that. And there are others. You know, New York City has Life Camp that really focuses on youth violence. And there are cities across the nation that do different aspects of office of violence prevention. And so we wanted to take a look at a variety of other things that are happening in the nation to see what could work in Austin. So we are exploring those. And then we're also exploring the role of bias in not just the data collection. We saw some of that with the racial profiling report that the Equity Office, the Innovation Team and OPO put forward. But we also know, for example, and I'll speak a little bit about this in a moment under concurrent work, that if we're thinking of taking dispatch or the emergency call center, 911, and making that a separate standalone entity or removing that somehow from the current Police Department, that achieves one perhaps aspect of separating duties. But there still continues to have to be underlying work on the bias that we all have to work, right? Like bias is something that we all have to work on, that we all have to move forward. How those calls are received, how the questions are answered, that is ongoing work to make sure that we are paying attention to that as we move forward in assessing those calls and then really diverting them to potentially other folks in addition to PD, but perhaps other folks like our mental health, our crisis prevention, whether it's host, whether it's expanding MCOT, to really see what that looks like. And so that research is ongoing. And we hope that by the time we convene the city-community reimagining task force early next month, that we are able to then move forward and have some of those at the ready for them. The other thing I'll say about the city-community task force is that it is our expectation that we will come to council periodically seeking either approval or budget amendments, in fact. I mean, I know that as we are moving forward with some of the ideas, we chose not to forward them in budget at the moment because we just didn't know how that was going to land. I gave some examples of thinking about, and I'm jumping a little bit to the concurrent work column because we are currently working on those moves because we believe those can be done administratively. But when we're thinking about 911, where we're thinking about the forensics lab or shifting some of the management services into other departments or to the corporate departments, the corporate PIO or IT or HR or finance, there are some, there's underlying work that has to be done. Do we have a standalone? Do we not? How do the shifts really fit into the current classifications or department? So there are questions that we have to do, and we did not have those answered yet. But we have already convened some of those meetings and that work is ongoing. And as that work progresses, we anticipate coming to council in pieces, not waiting for the entire framework to be done, but we anticipate seeking approval to shift budgets or, yeah, shift budgets around through budget amendment process. This work and this framework, as this continues to move forward, will of course require a great deal of community engagement. We anticipate trying to really engage the whole of community at this time and have not been able to do that yet as we're just kicking off the work. So we asked our team, our core leadership team. We had Equity Office and OPO and our Innovation Office and our project lead for resilience, Alba Sereno, to really think forward about creating a pilot listening session and thinking about what could that be that we could then engage other organizations. We can do this ourselves, but also engage other organizations in helping us with this template across the city because we also have to recognize that for, there are communities and there are areas in which government is not the most trusted voice. And so we really want to leverage those community members and organizations that can reach community deeper than perhaps if it were just government hosting a listening session on its own. We are piloting an initial listening session with that template this Thursday with the Public Safety Commission, with the Joint Inclusion Commission and with our Quality of Life Commission. So we'll know more as we get feedback from them on Thursday evening about what that looks like. It had been a date that was set a while ago, at least in our calendars. And so we are going to give that a go and see what feedback we get, what tweaks we have to get, and if it resonates as we move forward. So we're hoping that that will be successful. We're also working with the Equity Office to see how we can leverage their mini-grant program so that we can support those communities and organizations in community that perhaps can take on some of this engagement work and that we find ways to resource that as well. In these conversations, I'll say too that we want to have focus groups. It is hard for us to imagine doing this work without speaking to some of our internal staff as well, who will be impacted by this work. We have not yet heard from PD and we need to hear from PD voices. There are a lot of, whether it's civilian or it's sworn, voices that we have not heard from. I mentioned victim services before. It is an area that has been publicly talked about in terms of whether that is an area that could shift elsewhere or whether that needs to stay within PD. And I appreciate the concept of thinking about different ways that we can do it, but we have not spoken to staff that actually do that work. And so we want to create some listening sessions with PD directly. We have also heard and we've had ideas ourselves about expanding the role of EMS or host or shifting some of the functions to code or to part and others. And we have not had a conversation with them to see how would that impact your mission? How would that impact your work? And we want to make sure that we host some focus groups with internal staff as well. And then we're also creating, and I know that communications is working on this as well as OPO is providing some assistance on creating a really robust communications plan. We want to try to be as transparent as we can be. We believe that's the best way to build trust as we do this work. And so we're working on a website landing page that will contain where we are with the listening sessions, when they can be, summaries of those, summary of our meeting notes as we think about the city-community task force because we also want to be as transparent as we can be about that. We will have some surveys and survey results in different languages and be able to provide progress reports as that moves forward. So staff is actively working on creating that landing page that we can share out. And then I mentioned a little bit that we are not waiting to convene the city-community reimagining task force where there are things happening. And so there is some concurrent work that's moving forward. There were already some consulting work, and I'll talk about, or I'll share with you some slides in a moment about what that looks like. But we are mapping out existing initiatives in terms of what consulting work has already been happening or as a result of some of the resolutions that you have passed as a body that we were following up on. I mentioned that our innovation team is working on the review of 911 calls to see what that looks like, including sort of all the usual metrics and including sort of officer-initiated call trends, the categorization of type and sort of the geographic dispersion and response times amongst other metrics as we move that forward. I know that they are slated to come forward before the Public Safety Committee soon. And so while I don't expect that they'll be finished with their entire report, I do think that they will be able to provide some good initial data about what that looks like. Part of a recent resolution also has the OPM, the Office of Performance Management, partnering with our Equity Office and our innovation team to really review metrics and benchmarks and how those baseline measures are established and enhance racial. and enhance racial justice goals in alignment with SD 23. So that is work that is ongoing, and I'm sure we will be reporting on that soon. And then I finally mentioned that as we move and are getting things done and some of the review that we're looking at administratively, we have also had additional conversations about other items. And I know that those are conversations that you yourselves are having about other areas. Can we move or should we move some of the policing that happens by APD in parks or lakes or the airport? Could we shift that differently? And there has been a lot of conversation about internal affairs. Quite frankly, I know that there are national trends that suggest that that should be a standalone. So we are looking at what that looks like. But there are some legal concerns that we have. So we have not brought that forward yet. And wanting to make sure that it does not incur some unintended consequences in terms of the candor, particularly that officers are able to bring forward as they are required to be, to report out on incidents. So that is some of the work that is happening. I can go to the next slide for a minute. So as we thought about to pivot a little bit to some of the unanswered questions that we don't know, and it's one of the reasons that we didn't bring a big change in our recommendations through the budget process yet, because we, we just didn't know what some of the impact of things like Chapter 143 and pertinent case law about where are sworn versus civilian roles and who can assume those and who can supervise those. We want to be really thoughtful about any changes that this could have on pensions or benefits or job classifications as we rethink, what are some of the job duties that civilians could have versus sworn officers? Or if sworn officers were asked to respond in different ways, what does that look like? Again, as I mentioned, some of the best place for some of these moves, if they are approved, what do these happens? But how does that fit into departments, organizational structures and their mission? And then importantly, I have learned now being in Texas, that Texas law has some peculiarities that we have to work with. And so what proposals might require legislative changes as we move forward? Next slide. Finally, I just wanted to share with you some of the mapping of existing work and give you some general timeframes we are, that had been happening. We had mentioned that there was already consulting services that we expect to have some initial analysis at the end of this month and some actually development of some strategies in next month that are happening by Dr. Joyce James and her team. I had the privilege of meeting her and hearing a little bit about her initial work. And I think some of that work and some of her assessments and recommendations on workplace culture, I think, are going to be really instrumental for our work moving forward. In part of, there was a different resolution or a different, sorry, City Managers Initiative that is looking at AFD and some of the dispatch and emergency medical response. While that evaluation of proposals is happening at the moment, there could be some areas where that fits into our broader framework. And we certainly wanted to make sure that we kept a track of where that work was and that we apprived the task force as a body of what that work is as we move forward. There was in a recent resolution, a comprehensive evaluation of how sexual assaults that are reported to APD are investigated and processed. That work is ongoing and a final report and a presentation are expected in 2022. We will be monitoring that work to see if, what, if any of that can be brought into the current work that we have as well. Next slide. And then recent, another resolution about the investigations as follows the Tatum Report. And so that final report and presentation is expected to come forward by December 6 of 2021. And we will see again if there are segments or if any learnings from that can be brought into some of the reimagining work as we move forward. There's also a review of Cadet Training Academy that is scheduled for their final report in November of this year with intermittent reports on individual topics. So we will have an opportunity to see that soon. And then finally, that review of metrics and benchmarks and baseline measures that are aimed at zero based racial justice policy goals are expected to have an update and interim recommendations by October of this year. So again, I, I hope that you, this gives you a better sort of update on and a better perspective on where we are as staff in moving forward. You can go to the next slide, which is my end slide. We are really thankful, and I have to say that really so appreciative of the time and the insight that so many of our community members have given us as we thought about this task force work moving forward. We were happy to see that, I think, conceptually, we were very aligned with our community partners. There are some, it has given us some insight and some recommendations to think about in terms of the composition of the community task force as we heard some feedback from community members on the role of staff in those task force. So we will be thinking through that, but didn't want to make a final recommendation to the city manager until we honor the fact that we have two more of those conversations to go. So happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to be so appreciative of both our community members and frankly, our staff, who has been that core leadership team and the expanded leadership team that you saw in the beginning, they have been working a lot to gather information and to move forward. We meet as a group, the core leadership team, weekly for a protracted period with a lot of work happening in between. And we anticipate that continuing and to put that sense of urgency on this work as we move forward. So we are as committed as you are to making sure that we take this opportunity and an amazing opportunity that frankly is happening all across the nation to make systemic and sustainable change that will be a legacy for the city. With that, I will stand for questions if you have them.
Sounds good. Can you return us to the full screen? Colleagues, any questions on any of the presentations you've had? Councilmember Casar. And Councilmember Flanagan.
I really appreciate this work. I posted to the message board that I think it might be useful as we finalize the budget to to bridge gaps and receive yaps between community council and city staff on together on a calendar of action. I think this is sort of in several parts of your, of the proposal as laid out. But I'm interested in, you know, there, there are some things that we can't easily just do with budget changes. So for example, if there is a really large number of commercial burglar alarms that are false alarms and we want to reduce the amount of those that we go to, and therefore that reduces the amount of police time that's needed, you wind up in a chicken and the egg scenario where we can't reduce the overtime associated with those until we know how many of those calls we can reduce. And then it also works the other way around. And so what I'd be interested in is how do we calendar out ways to reduce the number of things that we address specifically with policing and reallocate dollars associated with that sort of in a calendared way? After, you know, after we do whatever we need to get done specifically in the budget in August, you know, other things associated with that. You've gone through a lot of those in your list. But I think if we, I think that passing a sort of calendar that shows which months we're going to tackle those issues at council that both have policing policy and budget implications at the same time is really of interest to me. And maybe we should find a way to work on that calendar all of us together.
Councilmember, I appreciate that. I, I reference that a little bit in the work plan as we move forward. And it is our, we did not want to create a calendar and a work plan. Again, we want to co-create this with the task force. And so we hope that once that task force is convened, that we can together create the calendar because that will of necessity prioritize what topics are we taking first? And when do we think we can put some deadlines and some dates to it and come back to council? But we did not want to do that as staff on our own. We really are grounded in trying to do this with community as a partner. So we have stopped short of calling this a formal framework with, that is all baked in, that really it is about the conceptual framework. And believe that once we are able to convene that quite quickly, we will, we all have a sense of urgency to come forward and think through what does that calendar and prioritization look like?
Councilmember Flanagan?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a lot of, a lot of good work in process. One thing, Nurya, that you said about having not engaged with the PD yet. You know, the council has, and the Public Safety Committee has very intentionally included officers who are doing work now in the conversations that we've been having about budget and use of force and 911 and all of those issues. Because you're right, it is important to have those conversations. I didn't want the public to think no one was doing that.
Absolutely.
Because in fact, the council is doing that through the Public Safety Committee. And then something that you said at the end about wanting to co-create the work with the task force. It's important to also co-create it with the council. You know, the, the, the community is demanding, is demanding action by the council. And if, if we don't do a better job collaborating in tandem on this work, then we're going to go off in different directions. And I'm concerned that some of that is happening. We, we, you know, it is not a typical process. Normally, council does a resolution, staff goes off and does some work, brings back an answer. There's nothing about what's happening in our community right now on any level that is normal. We have to think about how this work gets done in a different way. I am not going anywhere. I am at home. I can zoom call with anybody at any time. So let me please engage the council, engage the committee in this, in this co-creation, because it's, it's absolutely essential. And a lot, a lot of the community engagement occurs through our offices, through our constituents, through our appointments to committees, to appointments to commissions. And so you, you have seen proposals that I have put on the message board. The public can see that. Councilmember Casar, Councilmember Poole, Councilmember Alter, Councilmember Kitchen, a lot of us have put proposals out on the message board. And it's unknown how much of that is actually part of the work that you've done or how much of it's been in tandem. And I mean, I, it all sounds great, but let's, let's please do a better job partnering on this. Because I have to be able to answer to the public every step that you're taking. Otherwise, I'm going to start creating my own steps.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Flanagan. I, I think that we, as we continue to do that, we wanted to make sure that we had a concept that was supported and that was, I, I think would be something that we could work with community on as we move forward. I know we have had some conversations at a certain level, but I take your point that we want to do more and we want to be even more engaged in our engagement plan and in our listening sessions. We certainly include conversations with council and council offices. We want to make sure that we know from you directly what are some of the organizations out in community that you think are critical that we should move forward. But certainly, as we saw, the amount of ideas, some of which we share and some of which were novel that we'd like to consider. It is clear that we need to continue to, to bridge and collaborate. But I, I think it's just a matter of finding better avenues. And we will certainly work with the Public Safety Committee to continue to bring ideas forward and to share where we are.
I think one of the places where that, that conflict shines a light is, you know, it's, it's natural for, for you and Manager Kronk and the staff to want to have a very slow and thoughtful and deliberate process where you've dotted every i and crossed every t and you've figured out every legal risk and you've made your own decisions. And then you have the public that says, do it now. And, and the council is the place where that, that line between do it now and take, have this long elaborate process, we're the ones who have to decide when you stop doing the long process and you start acting. That's, that's how the democracy piece works for me at least. And, and so that's in part why I think the collaboration is so important. Because there, when we're talking about a, a, you know, reimagining or reconstructing or, you know, pick a word, we're doing things that no city has ever done. There are inherently going to be unknowns and risks. And I think the council, as the elected representatives of the public, need to be the ones who are determining what level of risk we're comfortable with.
I appreciate that, Councilmember. I am often, I often say, we, we don't want to let perfect be the enemy of good. And there is a sense of urgency here that we want to balance between at least exploring. And there are some things that we have to know. We have to know some of the legal barriers. We have to know what does that look like as we shift. But we also don't have to have it so completely polished and wait, as you said, till every i is dotted and every t is crossed to bring that forward, which is why we had anticipated bringing forward things to council as we felt that it was moving, it was sufficient to bring forward. Most of what are, I wouldn't even say delay, but most of our pre-work has been to make sure that we could bring some of the community folks into this task force so that we can convene that and come together. It wasn't just staff. But I certainly take your point that we have to continue to work with community, with our staff and with you as council to really truly get to the work that we're all trying to get to, which is reimagining public safety.
I want to repeat what I think, what I heard Greg say and what I heard Jimmy say, because I think it's, it's, it's really one of the key issues for how productive this could be or not or how the community and the stakeholders see something like this. And it's, on its face, you have addressed a lot of the questions. I mean, you have raised a lot of the issues and ideas that I've heard the community raise as well as my colleagues raise. But on its face, there's nothing in it that, that would suggest that it's, it's different than yet another committee or task force that's analyzing the, the questions. And I think that Councilmember Casar in asking for a calendar is going to, to the issue of how is it that, that as a community, we would know that institutionalized or baked into this was something that, that actually raised the level of confidence that things would in fact reach to conclusion and would result in, in real transformative change? And somehow or another, I think that has to be built into the programming or the institutionalizing of, of the idea itself. Because I think that to Jimmy's point is, is every bit as important as are the ideas themselves. It's, it's the resolve that it actually works. And I appreciate, for example, the fact that you would anticipate coming to the council numerous times as you have ideas that are ready to come. But if there's a group like this, it's looking like it, you need to come to the council more frequently than that because the council may have things that it wants to raise with you or questions from the community. So the, the point of getting together can't be just when, when you feel like you have something ready to, to report, to be institutionalized or baked into the, the, the processes as well. It's going to be received. It has to manifest on its face, the, the direct assurance that this is open, transparent, fast and designed to realize change.
I appreciate that, Mayor. And I, and I, you know, as I, I've certainly had this conversation with some of our community organizations. How is this task force different, right? And all I can say is that we are committed, we are leaning in. The people on the task force and, you know, not only am I leaning in, but people that I believe community trust on the task force and whether that's our Equity Office or whether that's our PO Office, the activists that we have in the, in the nonprofit organizations that we've been talking to. I think we are building that trust to know that we're moving forward. I think we will lose that trust if we don't make good on some of the commitments that we have made early on. And part of those is coming forward early in the fall to think about what does some of those moves, what does some of those moves mean? And the commitment we have by saying out loud, yes, we are thinking about some of the transfers or, or moving some notions or expanding notions of crisis intervention and mental health and committing to it. I mean, all we can do is to move forward and to show how committed we are. Certainly understand that, again, that there's bridge building and trust building to happen. And I'm hoping that as soon as this committee or task force can convene, that the, one of the first things that we do is to provide ourselves a calendar. Because it is that work plan and that calendaring that creates accountability for all of us as we move forward. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Alter, then councilmember Kitchen.
I actually wasn't raising my hand yet, so councilmember Kitchen wants to go.
Councilmember Kitchen.
I just want to echo what my colleagues have said. I think that a calendar would really help everyone understand what the process is. I think it's also necessary to, to put some specifics about around what the process is for people to share their, their, their questions or their concerns. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't know where that is in the process, but there needs to be. So, because there's, there's a lot, I think that there are, there are people, you know, we're all on the same page, I think, about safety. And about, about matching the, the function to the right person, which is a lot of what I see reimagining and reallocating is. We've talked about health, for example, we've talked about homelessness, we've talked about other things. It's really a better fit for a non-sworn officer or for a mental health professional or some other type of professional to address those concerns and I think that, or to address those issues. And I think, I think the police would agree with a lot of us. And they have said, as councilmember Flanagan has said in the conversations that we've had in the Public Safety Commission. So with that said, a lot of people in our community don't know what we're talking about. They're worried what we're talking about. And so they need to understand, they need to see a timeline and they need to see a place and a time in which they can express any questions that they have. So.
I take, yep, I, I think that, sorry, councilmember, I apologize.
No, no, that's it. That's it.
Okay. So again, the, the timeline, I think we are, we already anticipate working out. The commute, the robust communications plan, not only will have the website, but we will, again, that we will planning on listening sessions across the city. We plan on surveys, we plan on putting this in Austin Speak Up. We've got a variety of other areas and where we want to hear as many voices as we can. We have designed the listening sessions in part to be able to quantify some of the conversations that we've had that when we sort of come and share with community and with council. We can say we've heard, you know, thousands of voices and of these voices, this is where X percent say, this is where I want a uniform to show up. Or this is where I don't want a uniform show up because it is a triggering thing to me in community. Because there are alternatives that we should, you should have. So we certainly are moving in that direction. And as soon as that is finalized and we continue to work on that with our, with our communications design team and our equity team and think through with community, particularly those community members or organizations that will take advantage of some of those mini grants to do some of that engagement. We will be continuing to showcase where those events are happening and have dashboards about some of the input that we receive. So again, we are trying to be as transparent as we can as we do this work. Because we believe it is so essential to building and then maintaining the trust as we move forward.
Okay, councilmember Alter?
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that went into this and the thoughtfulness of trying to tailor options to Austin and make sure that we're moving forward in the most effective way possible. I didn't see in your presentation, though, who is on the task force. I saw the CMO leadership team. Can you help us understand who is on the task force or which groups at least?
Sure, I can, I can share with you some of the groups that we have spoken with. But I'll also say that they too needed to go back to some of their boards to see if this, if this is the right place for them. Or if we designed different tables, if they wanted to be on that table. But we have thought of, we have talked to the Crime Commission, we have talked to ACLU, we've talked to A, double A C P. We have talked to AJC, we have talked to GABA, to Austin Interfaith, to Texas Appleseed, to Just Liberty. We have a few more to go. Austin Asian Community Health Initiative and Icefoot of the Austin are some of the organizations that we have not talked to yet. I'm sure I'm missing some folks that have not come to the fore. But those are the types of organizations that we are speaking to directly as we move forward. Some have expressed an interest in serving absolutely on the task force. Some have expressed an interest depending on who else from the city staff is on the task force. And in particularly the role of PD as we move forward. And so we take those, that insight and that feedback to heart. Some have said, or at least one have said, that maybe the task force itself is not where they want to sit. But if there is a space for them to provide best practices and research, that that is the area that they feel that they, they want to do. I did not mention Communities of Color United, and that is another organization that we have spoken with as well. So we are waiting and to have those final two conversations. We hope to send an email out to all saying, all right, now we finalize those conversations. You've had a chance to go back to your organizations or your partners or your board. Let us know if you're in and we will start the work immediately. But those are the types of organizations that we are focused on.
Thank you for that overview. And I just want to reiterate something that I've shared with you privately is that I think that we need to have victims' voices in here. And I didn't hear any of the sexual assault advocates or the gun violence groups being part of that. And I think that, you know, if we're holistically going to reimagine public safety, it is not just the criminal justice side of it that we have to look at. It's all part of a process and we risk fixing one side and leaving another side broken. And I think the goal is to make everyone feel safer in the community. And so I would like to make sure that those voices are able to be a, a part of that. And I think, you know, in some conversations that I've been hearing where they've been absent, I think there's been some jumping to particular approaches that may not serve the victims well. And we need to really be asking about what our choices do for the, for the victims in, in particular cases as well. One of the things that I also wanted to just flag in terms of calendar process. You know, this came up a little bit earlier today when we mentioned that we had things that we passed in the budget that we were first seeing pass today. I know that we have a EMS and, and a FIRE RFP out for, you know, an efficiency review that we passed in last year's budget. It is July. It hasn't even come back to be, you know, be approved yet. And so I do worry, you know, there's some realities of government and, and our ability to act. But I don't think they're going to be in very sync with the demands that we're hearing from the community. And I don't, I don't know how we, we square that. But, you know, we need, we need to recognize that we're not evidencing that we can get things done quickly. Even when we care about this, that, that study in particular had been, you know, on a prior budget and was punted. And then, you know, it, it's not there and, and, and it would be really good to have it back right now as we're trying to reimagine public safety. So I, I, I think we have, we have to figure out how to navigate that, both for the public and for council in terms of the timetable for getting everything done. While at the same time, we have to understand our staff have limited resources and are also operating under COVID, et cetera. The other thing that I wanted to, you know, this is very heavy on APD. And there's, and how we, how we change things relative to APD. We have a lot of other departments that operate in the public safety realm that I believe should be part of our reimagining public safety. If we really want to get to the root of things and change things for people in our community. We have to be inviting FIRE and EMS and, you know, public health to be really at the, the center of these discussions. And so I, I understand the, the emphasis at first on some of the, the challenges that we are, we are experiencing and thinking about how to improve with respect to APD. But we really need to keep our eyes on that larger prize, which is reimagining public safety much more broadly.
So councilmember, I appreciate all of that, those comments as well. I mean, I think we had, and I believe in, in one of the slides, I specifically point to health and to code and to EMS. But certainly understand that as we think about public safety, that we are really thinking about it more broadly. We are starting with PD because we have to sort of think about the work that they do. But then also think about, there's been some great work done by EMS and how they are managing call volume. And there's been some great work with the host team about what they're doing. There is some thought about thinking about what role code could play in moving some of these functions as, as we move forward. So it, it will be kind of a conversation that we have with a variety of stakeholders. But we're also cognizant that we can't do it all at once. And I don't think that all that that's what you were suggesting. I, I take to heart that it is about some prioritization. But please know that we envision having a much broader conversation. And to your first point, I, I believe that that is something that we have thought about with some of our work groups and our more targeted groups as that moves forward. We are trying to balance the desire for many people perhaps to serve on this task force and keeping a number that we can move forward quickly and agilely. And seeing what other folks in community can bring their expertise to some of the work groups. But certainly will be bringing back and thinking about if there are critical folks that we have missed in the ability to hear all these voices as we move forward. But I appreciate that.
I do think that there, though, there are people in the victim community who know a lot about how these things work and how they don't work. And their voices are very important if we want to prevent other people from becoming victims down the line.
I hear you.
Thank you. Colleagues, councilmember Kitchen?
I think I've mentioned this before, and I think it's, it's part of what you're thinking about, Nuriya. But I just, for those who might be listening, you know, we, we also have a wealth of community and other parts of the community through our boards and commissions appointees. So at, at some point in your process, reaching out and hearing from those folks. Paul, I mean, it's the, there's the obvious boards and commissions like the Public Safety, of course, which needs to be front and center in our quality, of various quality of life commissions. But, but there are other, you know, we have a broad range of commissions that are touched by safety, with safety. And, and that can be helpful in terms of hearing from the community and understanding communities' thinking maybe.
I agree, councilmember Kitchen. And I think that we're, once we pilot this first listening session on Thursday, we'll, we'll learn more on whether we are thinking about it the right way or whether we completely missed the mark, which I hope we have not. But the anticipation is that we then take that and move forward and do a much more robust citywide. And that includes internal and external stakeholders. And what I'll also say is that our communications plans and visions, that that is not the only place that we have listening sessions. That as we bring forward ideas and recommendations and, and do that, that we continue to engage community. We hope that this is a constant feedback loop and that we really engage the city of Austin in general about re-envisioning public safety. It's a lofty goal, but we're really hoping to take on community engagement in really big ways that get to particularly those voices that have traditionally been underrepresented in our community.
Councilmember Poole?
Thanks, Mayor. Nuriya, I just wanted to thank you for the comprehensive approach that you're taking on this. It's, it's really a lot of diligent work in here. And there's a lot of openings for people to get engaged and share their concerns and their stories and their ideas. As we're all working toward a, a better future in policing in our city. I wanted to also note that each one of us as councilmembers can also engage our specific district communities to get their feedback too. And to that end, Natasha and I are, are looking at having that sort of a focus group next, I think it's going to be in September. We were looking at doing it next month, but things are, there's too much going on. To try to specifically talk to District Seven and District One about their particular issues. And then I am, we fully intend then to feed this information back into the larger group so that anything and everything that we're able to compile can be added to the good compilation that you're also working on and leading on. So I imagine other, other, excuse me, for some reason, I just got something stuck in my throat. Everybody else will probably be doing things like that to you. So we'll be feeding back to you as well.
I appreciate that, councilmember. And actually, once we finish the, the pilot session, we hope to package that and offer that, share that. Hopefully, if that is useful to councilmembers as you do engagement. Because we'd like to get some consistency on the feedback, but there could be other ways to do it. You know, anecdotally, I'll share that in my former city, if someone had told me that I'd be able to move minimum wage forward and do 26 listening sessions and get council to approve it in under a year, I, I would have called somebody a liar. And I believe Spencer, the city manager, knows as well because he lost his deputy for about a year as we did this. It was all I did. And he has encouraged me to think about shifting those responsibilities currently to really focus on public safety. I know that this is important. It is important to you as a council body, is important to community. It is important to us as staff. And so we will do all that we can to be as accountable as we can be. But it also means sort of thinking about those opportunities to continue to have engagement with community as we move forward. So know that we have planned to take on the lessons that we learned from this pilot session and share that with your offices. And as we have additional tools on engagement, we will do that as well.
Councilmember Kassar?
Thank you for saying that. And, and I just want to express it because we've asked a lot of questions and pushed a lot here, just my confidence. And I know it's shared by so many of us in, in you deputy manager, leading on this and the city manager assigning you to, to, to lead on this work. And I think many of the suggestions come just because it's, it's so important. And I think having a council vote at the end of the budget that sort of solidifies a sort of calendar or work plan can show that we're all committed to doing this together. But I'm, I'm grateful for the work you're putting into this.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember Flanagan?
And, and to, to that end, you know, I don't think everything we're saying today is stuff you weren't already thinking about. And so I'm, I'm acknowledging that too. But it's also important for the public to know that the council is also thinking about it. So, you know, with it, with that spirit, I just want to say that I also want to be sure that we're not engaging in a process that is trying to reinvent the very longstanding work that Black and Brown-led nonprofit organizations and community leaders have been doing for a long time, a long time before any of us used, a lot of the words we're now using or members of the community use the words they're now using. And making sure that, that that hard work is centered. Because I think a lot of the challenges and questions may have already been answered through the, the work of those groups.
PO, councilmember Ritter, do you?
I also want to thank you. When I came on the council, I, I really was pushing for community policing. Because I thought that, you know, that was going to be, be able to solve some of the problems that we're having over here. It worked really well in my community and we implemented it about 20 years ago under Chief Watson. And she, she implemented that community policing and we ran with it. And, and it was very successful. You know, we used to have drive-bys and, and the people were afraid to call the police. Because, you know, there were incidents where you call the police and you get the one that ended up getting shot and killed. And those were the kind of things that were happening over here on the east side. And through community policing, we were able to, you know, get the police out. We have, we had very good programs. We had officers that worked with our kids. We had police ICE, a rapper that was rapping with the kids on the side. So there was a lot of work and a lot of outreach. But, and I was, when I got on the council, I thought maybe I thought maybe we could replicate that around the city and other parks that were having problems with the police. But it just, I could never get it going after that. There were just too many incidents with police in community that, you know, they lost the trust that we have worked so hard to build. And, you know, it just takes one or two officers to really, really create these big problems, you know. And unfortunately, that's what happened, is happening here. And for some reason, there's just, no matter what we tried, the academy on training our officers just didn't work. And, you know, and there were some officers there that just didn't want to be told that you're working for the community. You know, you're not working for the union or you're not working for, you know, your brotherhood. You were actually getting paid by the community. And we need to really just look at that and remind the officers that, you know, it's our hard-earned tax dollars that we pay every year, is paying your salary. And we want the respect that we deserve as everybody else. You know, as people of color, it's always been, you know, looked down upon. And the police, we always felt that the police were the tools to keep us suppressed. And that's the way, you know, we grew up here in the east, I think, constantly. And I, you know, we finally got community policing here in my neighborhood. And we had a very good relationship. But I see that going down. And we really need, you know, our staff to come back with a good program. And please come with a calendar so that we can see, you know, what's, what we're going to be doing so the community can also see it.
Well, do, councilmember.
Colleagues, anything else in this briefing before we go to pulled items? Deputy Manager, thank you so much.
Mayor, I did have a quick comment.
Yes, Councilmember Tovo.
Thanks. Deputy City Manager, I appreciate your, I appreciate the process that you're engaging in and the content and really the perspective that you're bringing to it of making sure that it is centered coming from the community. I think that's really, as you've articulated, just so, so important. And so thank you for that approach and for the care that you're taking to reach out to all of our, all of our offices and making sure that we're informed and your openness to hearing ways in which that we can assist in getting the word out as you move forward. I know it's very, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I hope that either you or our city manager at some point in today's discussion or perhaps next week will help us understand. You mentioned a couple of times that the kinds of conversations you're having at the leadership team are very in line and some of the same ideas that you've seen posted on the message board have come up in your own staff conversations. And so I hope that you can help us. You identified a few of them. I think the forensic lab was one, the Parks Police was another. As we discuss either today or next week, those more specific proposals, I hope that you will provide us with your staff recommendation on whether those, whether the, if there are things that you've already talked about, I appreciate that we want the community to be engaged. There's just a tremendous amount of work to do though. And so, you know, I am really interested in talking about and supporting some of those proposals and moving forward during this budget process. And so I hope the staff will, will help us and will chime in as we're talking about those and let us know how they align with the conversations you've already begun.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Tovo. And I think that we will, as we have seen that now on the message boards more and more because we had not necessarily seen all the ideas that were happening and really actually some exciting new ideas that are interesting to explore. We, at the moment, have perhaps more questions and answers to that in terms of how and the dynamics and the mechanics of shifting things over. But we absolutely will take the opportunities to engage in conversation on some of these ideas that we seem to be very aligned with in the future. Some of those, we will, we are thinking about having those conversations with communities and others, as I noted and perhaps you noted, are things that we can do administratively. And it's just a matter of figuring out all the moving pieces as we move forward. So we will certainly continue to converse with you as a body.
And Mayor, that's a great transition if we're open to it. But going back to when Ed was laying out the goals for this afternoon session, to not just talk about what some of those ideas that may have been posted by you or your colleagues, but then also things that may be brought up for the next work session. And so before we go to pulled items, I wanted to at least create a space for the council to be able to air some of those publicly so we could have a discussion around them.
Okay, so we'll open up the conversation broadly on budget before we go and do pulled items. Councilmember Kitchen.
I think I saw this on the, on the budget. I appreciate the opportunity to, to hear from the consultants on the homeless report. I think that's scheduled for next week. I think that, that I'm wanting to understand how our budget aligns with those recommendations, understanding, of course, that we're, that I don't, I don't think we've gotten to the point where we're funding all recommendations at this point. But I want to know that we're aligned with those. So I'm looking forward to having that conversation.
Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. I already mentioned this to Ed, but I would like to have Dr. Esq. present at our next work session to talk with, through with us, the opportunity to create a chief medical officer position and to beef up the medical director's office to allow us to better meet the public health needs across EMS and public health and fire. And I think he would be the appropriate staff person to help us to understand the possibilities there on a larger scale for our city. And then I posted this morning some amendments that I'm offering along with councilmembers Ellis, Tovo, Poole, and Hybra Madison. And I think Councilmember Kitchen chimed in that she also supported with respect to EMS and providing additional resources to EMS to meet COVID needs and the needs of our growing city. So perhaps we can have EMS there to talk about what some of those needs are and how these kinds of proposals would help in that direction. And I've mentioned the Office of Violence Prevention. I think that's, you know, a couple of other folks also mentioned it. And I know that several people wanted to work on that and will work towards having more concrete thoughts on that for next week.
Thank you. Councilmember Flanagan.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Alter and your cosponsors for, or your group for putting the EMS proposal together. I think in prior meetings, we've, many of us, myself included, expressed support for those EMS investments. And I'm looking forward, Spencer, to nailing down the funding sources for that. I think given the pandemic that we're in, adding resources to EMS 11 months from now is probably not going to be enough for us. So I'm very interested in figuring out how to, how to adjust the budget to accomplish that goal, those investments for EMS. I may have missed what you said, City Manager. Are you wanting us to lay out what we posted on the message board yesterday?
I think that would certainly be a good use of this time if you're willing to. Again, it's on the message board, so it's public. But this is a chance to have your colleagues ask any questions if they had any or to at least say that this is a discussion item you want to be having at the next work session.
Great. Well, if it's okay with you, Mayor, I will go ahead and talk about my two proposals. I posted two proposals on the message board yesterday. One is a significant restructuring of how we organize public safety assets that are currently allocated to the police department. You can read the longer version of that on the message board, and I hope, I hope everyone has been able to do that. This type of structural change is obviously not something you can finalize in two weeks. And so no one, I think, is saying that you can magically wave a wand and answer every question in that timeframe. However, I do think there's a lot of significant value in thinking through policing and public safety resources in a different way. And by creating these additional departments or restructuring it in this way, you can have more civilian leadership because the way the state law is written about chiefs, it actually doesn't use the word chief, it says department head. And so you can eliminate some of the higher-level sworn leadership because you can then replace them with civilians as long as it's departments that you're talking about. And then that's, so there's a little bit of cost savings there by going from sworn to civilian and better oversight, I think, in large part by going sworn to civilian. And then in one case, creating a civilian-led department. That's the emergency comms section, which would include not just 911 and CTEC, but also data analytics and forensics and other things. And I think this is compatible in large part with what Councilmember Kassar had posted, where he talked about certain areas wanting to be moved out. And so one way to do that is through the proposal that I have put together. And there are certainly multiple ways that we might accomplish this in terms of sequencing. We might, staff might decide that the best way to accomplish it is one at a time, where you create one department and you still leave an Austin Police Department while you set that one up, then you break off another piece movement. So I'm, I'm certainly open to that level of analysis from staff and really figuring out the right way to implement what is ultimately a significant conversion of how we manage from creating more civilian leadership in kind of a chain of command situation. But also by being in separate departments, we can be more in line with what the Mayor Pro Tem put together in her metrics resolution, where you can have a different set of metrics for each of these departments, and that will better drive organizational culture and how decisions are made by management. In my proposal, I also say that the department, I suggest to handle what is currently neighborhood policing and patrol resources should also include tactical squad, bomb squad, those types of things, that the leadership of that department be in line with the proposal I had daylighted to the public earlier, where you have each of the four regions plus downtown command, which are currently led by a commander, that those five commanders operate as a group with one technically designated department head in order to comply with state law. But that way, your patrol resources are also represented by somewhat of a 10-1 style geographic council with the five commanders so that you get more diversity and a more broader perspective through the kind of day-to-day leadership decisions that are made in that bucket. So there's obviously a lot of, a lot of detail that has to be figured out in order to fully implement the proposal. And so, you know, it may not be something that is, as I said earlier today, i's dotted and t's crossed before next week's adoption, but something I think is a significant movement towards accomplishing some of the other ideas. That's one proposal. The other one's a little more straightforward. You know, the, the current site of the APD headquarters, which was also the former site of the municipal court. We already took care of municipal court. That new facility opened in April. Credit to all the staff for pulling that off and my now former judicial committee colleagues, Councilmember Poole, Kassar, and the Pro Tem, and then Councilmember Madison for moving the muni court as quickly as possible. And Alex Gill, the real estate department, had a big role in that too. By, that site has already been identified prior as something that was an opportunity for redevelopment. I think this public safety reimagining conversation is also an opportunity to expedite the current remaining staff that exist on that site, moving them into other facilities that are emptying out because we have built new facilities in Miller. We have a new PDC building. We've got the AE building that's coming online. So we'll have offices that are empty. And, and for the public, you know, in some cities, the police department headquarters also serves as a booking facility or a jail. That is not true. In our community, we partner with the county for those facilities. And so this is ultimately, right now, just offices. And so there's no reason why that couldn't be moved into another facility that frankly, where the building is safer, where the building has better working conditions, not a building that is very much at the end of its useful life. My proposal is to expedite that process, demolish the building, as we were planning to do anyway, and then initiate a public process, a community-led process, to design a way to leverage that asset for, to help address historic inequities for the Black community and to support future Black community economic success. Given that property's location downtown, its proximity to the water of Greenway, and the future bearing of I-35, it has the opportunity to represent some pretty significant value and asset for the public, not that dissimilar from the conversation we just had on St. John's. This one had, will have a much different symbolic meaning, but I think can result in a pretty significant asset in a place that ultimately might be, instead of a barrier to East Austin, a gateway to it. Those are my two proposals.
Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate all the other councilmembers that have put their information on the message board. I think that's really helpful for some of us who may not be in subquorums to be able to see what everybody's working on. We are working on Parks and Recreation Department issues. I know Parks Foundation has asked for more funding. Obviously, our park spaces are cherished places in our community that a lot of people feel are underfunded. So we are taking a look at that and also looking at the role of park rangers. I think Councilmember Poole had also put that specifically in her post. So we might be able to talk about what you've heard if you're not in a different subquorum and, and look at the role of park rangers in policing and citations within our park systems. That's something that we've been working on and addressing the uses of clean community fee, knowing that the Clean Creeds Resolution continues to move along and we want to put ourselves in a good position to this budget to address litter abatement, street sweeping, things between resource recovery, parks, and watershed protection to look at that fee and what uses it's set up for. And then we also had led on a safe storage campaign a couple of months ago, and Mayor Pro Tem had also had one. I think they were a couple of weeks apart. So I know there's some work with the Gun Safety Task Force. But I apologize, Councilmember Alter, I haven't made my way all the way to it. But I like the idea of your Office of Violence Prevention and would like to be able to work with you on that. And you may have a couple of ideas through our research with safe storage specifically that might be able to either happen parallel or conjunction with that. So I just wanted to daylight those topics that we've been working on and appreciate Councilmember Alter's leadership on the EMS items that we've also been able to assist with.
Councilmember Poole.
Thanks, Mayor. I put up my proposals for discussion and consideration on the APD changes on the message board. So that's all there for everybody to see. And I appreciate the advocates in the community working closely with my staff in order to highlight the work that they had already done so that I can see the work, see that work and then adopt pieces of it, knowing that other pieces will be taken on by others on the dais. I have additional budget amendments that I'll be putting up on the message board too. Just basically briefly working with on AFD staffing, Moore's Crossing Fire Station, we need some additional FTEs for an aerial ladder and maintenance. EMS, appreciate the input and the close working partnership with the association and President Chee on co-sponsoring the asks from the union with Councilmember Alter, working on some additional pieces of it with Councilmember Kitchen and also with Councilmember Ellis. There are some adjustments that we're making to the requests and we'll be presenting those. PAR, the Parks Rangers, as Councilmember Ellis mentioned, looking at those, also operations and maintenance on trails, childcare at the rec centers, I've brought that in past years. I'll be bringing that, additional money for that. And again, bringing money again this year for facility repairs. And let's see, PAR watershed, working, the workforce first program that I brought last year, I'll be bringing some additional increases to that. So we do that good work. And the abortion access logistics program that we pioneered last year with the leadership of Mayor Pro Tem Barza and Councilwoman Kassar that I helped on, I will be bringing additional monies for that item for public health.
So for me, I appreciated Deputy City Manager, the part of your presentation that talked about more than just policing and criminal justice and taking a look at the strategic direction having to do with equity more broadly than that. And I think that this is really the time to be looking at the city really from top to bottom in terms of everything that the city does. So I'm real excited to see what those initiatives are and in a budget cycle like this, whether that leads to different prioritizations within departments, all departments. Two in particular stand out to me, recognizing that there's no, there's no civil justice without. without economic justice. So the conversations that relate to the workforce development plan and program that have come back to us, because that I think is one of the necessary ways you start addressing wealth and, and income inequalities in the city. There's a proposal in front of us now from, from Workforce Solutions. And then beyond that, I think that in the same thing, in terms of economic development, childcare, we're going to be talking about that later this week. But that is perhaps one of the chief roadblocks in this city, as in many cities, for people being able to get jobs and take jobs and get education and get skills and then to advance their families. So I think that, especially right now, given what's happening with the virus, we're really in danger of losing what childcare infrastructure we have as a city. So I don't know how that relates to, to potential future cares funding versus otherwise. But I think it's regardless where that money comes in, it's got to be something that we, that we figure out how to, 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 to be able to resolve. And then the last one in terms of, and there'd be lots of other examples again, as you're looking at equity throughout the city, is in healthcare delivery. And I know that question's come up, there are certain things we do and that we don't do the way healthcare in our city's been divided. But we had talked about using this moment to really leverage what we did in this city with respect to health inequities, longer-term health inequities and using this opportunity. I think I haven't seen that, and it's probably happening, I just haven't seen it. But that's something that I think is real important priority for the city as well, to recognize the, the inequalities we're seeing in susceptibility and figure out how long-term we start changing those, those underlying inequities.
Councilmember Kassar.
I've posted three amendments to the message board as well. The first one relates to, you know, we've been talking about which sections of the police budget we want to separate. And I think Councilmember Flanagan is proposing something really significant, and I, and, and I'm supportive of making that kind of significant change. But internal affairs in particular being separated, I think, is something we should move on with all swiftness and potentially the, the SIU as well, to provide independence. The third amendment is about moving forensics out, which we've just had a conversation about for so long and has been advocated for at a national level by national scientists for so long, that I think we can just move forward with that one swiftly. As Councilmember Flanagan said, I don't think we have to pass a budget and expect that there is a new department head and that ever, that, that all the shifts have happened by day one of the fiscal year. But I think since our budgets are a planning document, I would want to make sure that people understand that that means it's happening in the course of this budget, in the course of this year. My second amendment that I posted, sorry, went out of order, just because I think, now that I say it out loud, it makes sense to bucket those two together, is not having the next three sets of cadet classes that are planned. There's a Q and A posted that keep, that has a smaller level of budget savings associated with it. And I'd be interested in having the budget office and the manager clear up. I think what I'm talking about is if we don't have those classes and then don't fill those positions, I think there's probably more of a salary savings by FY 2022 than what's currently listed. I just mean, if we just don't have those classes at all and don't fill those positions, we generally have been calculating at about $100,000 worth of salary and benefits for, per position. So it's probably a nearly $20 million reallocation. And I think that we should reallocate that money to things that prevent harm and prevent violence, specifically to things that improve public safety. We talked about a lot of those in committee and in community. And we haven't added a family violence shelter bed in years and years and years. We should do that. Our services for people experiencing homelessness, the Office of Violence Prevention, as Councilmember Alter and others have mentioned. And I think we should really focus on things like gun violence intervention and preventing violence and harm that surrounds sex work and against sex workers and other evidence-based forms of, of violence prevention. In that amendment that I wrote, I would really like to make sure that we provide direction, that some of those reallocated dollars away from policing are directed to areas of the city that face that violence or inequity or poverty or public safety challenge. I think it's really important for the community to understand and for us to act in a way that shows that this is about reducing harm and reducing violence. And that, and that that is a big part of why we're trying to change public safety budgets is because we want to make things safer. And so in part, I would want to see that redirection of dollars really go to address those issues of violence and, and harm. So those are the primary three amendments I floated, but I know that there are many others out there and, and generally am supportive and, and want to work together with you guys to, to land it.
Councilmember Kitchen and Councilmember Flanagan.
Well, as you all know, I've, I've already been making the, moving forward on the proposed additional dollars for the first response for mental health calls, 911 calls and mental health diversion initiative. And so those dollars are reflected in the, in the proposed budget. I will have a budget writer that speaks to some additional details around that program, specifically things related to data analysis and, and evaluating impacts, as well as the project management component of it that we included dollars for. And then I, as Councilmember Pool mentioned, I'll be working with her on budget amendment related to additional dollars for community health, community health paramedics, the thinking being that those paramedics can be of assistance with their homeless population and potentially, and, and could also be of assistance to mental health calls to, to, to supplement the program that we have right now. So, and I appreciate what everyone else is bringing forward. Look forward to discussions on those. I support what many of you are suggesting and have commented on the, well, actually, I support the direction that all of these are going in. And I have commented on the message board, my request to be part of the, the budget writer related to the, related to the medical director, public health, healthcare medical director, as well as the, the gun violence test, gun violence office.
Okay, Councilmember Flanagan.
Yeah, I wanted to just add two things. One, Councilmember Alter brought up the public safety outside of police. And I think having a published schedule of budget amendments, the way Councilmember Kassar has included in his message board post, which I think a lot of us have been talking about, is important, because I think the Public Safety Committee can start really digging into more than just police, getting into fire EMS, getting into code enforcement, which, which is a kind of unscrutinized, but needs scrutiny area of city, of, of the city right now. So I'm, I'm excited to do that work too. On the, on the cadet classes, you know, I, I think there's a, there's an important conversation to have with the community about wanting to, to reiterate, at least for me, to reiterate that these decisions that we're making and this shift in reimagining is, is, is in no way intended to leave a 911 call unanswered. And so the hardest part of this is how do you, how do you find the money to stand up a whole new program? While you don't, you know, how do you make that transition is a hard, is a hard question. So I'm comfortable with saying that the, the, in the context of the review of the training academy, that that is not to a place that I am comfortable with to have a November class. So I'm definitely comfortable with that. My suggestion is that classes beyond November, that we kind of put in a holding pattern until we can complete and have comfort with the review of the training materials and the process of the training academy. In part, this is because, you know, we have regular attrition from our department, and those numbers might go up or down in whatever, whatever ways we want. And so, you know, there are parts of, of, of work that still requires sworn officers. And, and but for legislative changes, there will still be work that requires sworn officers. And if we have a training academy that we're excited about, then we're going to want new cadets coming in and allowing older officers who maybe don't feel that their approach to policing is where the department is headed, to allow, allow them a graceful exit. And so I, I want to kind of reserve my support for the future cadet class decision. But I also don't want to go ahead and pre-spend that money, knowing we're going to do it. It's all for me based on the review of the training materials and, and the academy process.
Colleagues, Councilmember Alter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to underscore your concern for the opportunity for childcare actions that are important, particularly under COVID. And also the work that Workforce is, Workforce Solutions is doing, and the opportunity to make a relatively small investment that would get us started on really ratcheting up our, our workforce training. And that's something else that I'm looking at. I've been holding on that, trying to figure out if Travis County is funding it first, which would be preferable in my, my view, to get us started in that. But I, but I think that's, that's important. I'm excited to have these conversations, and I hope that, you know, as we have them, that we can ask questions and try to understand things without it presupposing where we are on something, because there's a lot of unanswered questions. And I want to underscore the comments that one of my colleagues made earlier, really inviting staff, if there are questions or issues that we need to know about a particular direction that we might be going. Even if you don't have the answers, we need you to surface the questions so that we, we think about it. I also like the suggestion that Councilmember Flanagan is suggesting, that even if we do identify cuts or possible cuts, that we don't have to spend all the money immediately as we move through budget, that we might be able to take a little bit of time to think through, to make sure we're making a prioritized choice most effectively.
Colleagues, anything else? Manager.
Mayor, just as we wrap up, really appreciate the discussion today and airing some of these important ideas out there. I'm going to see if our deputy, our Deputy Chief Financial Officer has any closing remarks. But we look forward to working with you on these ideas as you put the amendments forward.
Thank you, City Manager. I'd only add that we'll continue to monitor the message board. And if you have additional ideas, formulate, please post them to the message board. We'll get them from there and I'll come prepared to facilitate the conversation on the board. And of course, I'm always available if you want to talk to me directly about some of your comments.
All right, Ed, thank you. Manager, thank you. Colleagues.